We're ready? All right. Go ahead and call tonight's meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag, United States of America, to the Republic, to our nation, to God, to Israel, to the region, and to this world.
Roll call, all members of council are present tonight. Approval of tonight's agenda, I do have one minor amendment. That is to move item number four up in front of the audit review. Do you have any motion to approve the amended agenda?
No, moved.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment, is there anyone here to comment?
Yes, hi, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, Kim Holmes here.
Good morning, or good, good morning.
Good evening. Well, I apologize for not being there in person, I'm traveling for work in DC. But I did want to offer some brief public comment on a package of information I submitted on Friday. That relates to the use of ARPA funds for parks and recreation. Listening in on some of the previous discussions and workshops.
Go ahead. You're still with us, Kim?
Oh, hi, I apologize for that. I'm back. I wanted to just submit some comments on use of ARPA funds for park and recreation investments. Listening into some of the previous workshops. It sounded like there was some question around whether investment in parks and recreation was an eligible use of the COVID relief funds, and there really was, I think, a lot of gray area around this. Since the last workshop, our work session around ARPA, there was some additional federal guidance that came out. And it's been interesting to see some announcements from communities around how that has really clarified use of the funds in some areas, and particularly around parks and recreation. And so I had submitted a spreadsheet with examples of 20 different communities, counties and cities, that have announced projects that they'll be funding using these ARPA funds. And also tried to, where the information was available, parse what portion of their overall funds were being allocated to parks and recreation. Some of the cities were using about 50% of their funds, but I think on average about 6% of the funds were be used, were being used for various amenities, park improvements, and even new park investments. So I just wanted to offer this information to city council and staff members, because I do know there's an upcoming work session, considering kind of the, the next use of funds, and would request that you consider some, some improvements to our parks as you budget these funds. And so I have worked with Kara, the Chair of the Parks and Rec Committee, to develop a list of what we think are some immediate funding needs for the parks. So I just offered that to you for consideration, and if there's any information you need about, you know, where we could use some of these funds in our parks, the Parks and Rec Committee would be happy to produce that for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The other? Okay. Seeing no other comments, let's move forward to the consent agenda. February 22nd, 2002, council work session minutes. February 22nd, 2002, city council meeting minutes. The appointments to the 50-year plan stakeholder advisory committee. Be in your packet.
Like to, like to remove from the consent agenda, the 50-year.
Okay. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda with the February 22nd council work session meeting minutes and the February 22nd city council meeting minutes?
Just the minutes.
Yeah, just the minutes.
No moved.
Hearing a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. As far as the appointments, can we do that tonight or move that to the next meeting?
Can do it on the regular agenda, yeah.
Could do it on our regular agenda, there is a meeting scheduled, I believe, for next week on the 15th for this particular group, so we do need.
Okay, we'll do, we'll add that at the back end of the new business.
No moved.
All right. Hearing a motion to amend the agenda, to add item number seven, the 50-year plan stakeholders advisory committee. Ended by Council President Grayson, is there a second?
Second.
Hearing a second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, new business. Item number four, adventure festival logo. Mr. Butman?
Mayor and council, good evening, and thank you for moving this item up. I will try to be brief. So in your packet, Exhibit A, you will see the revised logo that Treadway Events pulled up. They combined the suggestions from council with the logos that you had seen in the initial round, as well as some of the themes that we were offered up by some council members. I think the biggest thing to note here is that the mountain in the background is representative of Mount St. Helens, that is what one of the suggestions that we actually saw in a drawn logo was, and so they were mimicking that. Staff raised their concerns about, you know, the council had asked to bring the logo closer to the 100-year, and that logo had Mount Hood on it, the welcome to Scappus sign has the Mount Hood logo on it, and Treadway said they were just copying what they had seen for the potential revisions, but that they could easily add a top onto that mountain if we wish to change that. I'd just like to mention that currently we're at the stage where we would like to begin doing marketing outreach and sponsorship raising, but we are waiting for this logo to do that. We'd like the package to look professional and complete. So I'm able to answer any questions, and of course, take any criticisms on this if you'd like.
Two.
Couple things, first of all, I thought at the last meeting we had talked about involving Daniel Rocha in this process. I did like the one that Megan submitted to us, I see parts of that in here, but really missing there is our main identity in Scappus, and we're putting a ton of money into it, or some money into it, that's the, that's the candle, one of our main identities, and I think it needs to be included in that document somewhere. That, you know, not sure how they missed that, but Treadway isn't directly connected to Scappus either, and Daniel is. Wondering why Daniel wasn't.
I think the intention with the logo was to capture the theme of Adventure Fest, which was to celebrate the natural world that surrounds Scappus and the connection to the outdoors that we provide to our residents and the people that come through. And so I think that, I mean, all the logos at this point hadn't had the candle, I mean, that's a revision we could make, but I think that when they were developing these logos and thinking about them, they were trying to combine the two, the elements that we've seen before, as well as keeping it feeling like it's an adventure-themed logo. Again, you know, if council wishes to make that change, we can, we can make it. And that.
Mr. Mayor? Um, thank you, Isaac. I, I remember leaving last meeting with the understanding that we were going to leave it in the hands of Treadway, that they, you know, are a professional graphic designer on, on staff, and that this was part of the package, so thank you for bringing this back to us and asking them to make adjustments. I'm glad that you mentioned at the beginning about the discrepancy between the mountain, and I have like a, a triangle drawn on the top of mine, so I would love to see the peak, and I would love to see it be Mount Hood. I completely agree that this is a separate marketing initiative, we're, we're marketing adventure and outdoors of Scappus, and we're not marketing Scappus the city. And so I personally am comfortable that not all of the elements that we're used to seeing in branding Scappus are here, especially when there's trees, mountain, and water, and, and a sun. I, I personally am not quite sure where a candle would fit into that. Looking at this, you know, I see the, the kayaker, I, I'm wondering, you know, we're, we're, we're known for biking as well, and, and, and paths, so not to say like add all the images of all the things that you can do in Scappus, I'm in favor of, I mean, you could add a bicycle, or you could add, I, I don't know, I don't, I personally don't gravitate it just towards being someone in a kayak, but that's my personal opinion.
So we could change, again, the top to make it Mount Hood, and then maybe on that left side in the background, we could remove that stand of trees and put a bicycle silhouette in there. I think that would be a good spot if we, if, if you'd like that.
Yeah, I mean, Counselor McHugh's referring to something, a, a citizen was listening in on to our meeting and literally threw a graphic together that had all, all the ideas, and it wasn't cohesive, but it included everything that, you know, we had talked about, and on that was someone riding a bicycle, as well as somebody it looks like running, as well as a kayak, so, you know, it's like water and land activities included together.
Yep.
Go ahead. Isaac, this is Counselor Lasowski. I'm just, the, the word festival, it's, it's pulling me away, I don't know, it's just, it doesn't seem like it's in the right location, and so my recommendation would be to either have that centered within the, the graphic, or actually even offset to the right more, so it kind of evens out the flow of the words. I also noticed that the word adventure, it almost looks like it's, I don't know, like a rattlecan font for the coloring, it might be the print that I received, but the kayaker, which kind of accents the word adventure in the color theme, is extremely solid, and so I think that there's an imbalance there that I would like to see maybe addressed by the graphic designer. Besides that, I think it is a representation of a lot of the elements that we had asked you to take back to, to the group to be able to present to us this evening, so with the addition of obviously having Mount Hood imagery added, I think that would kind of fulfill our desires that we had requested.
Okay, so it sounds like what, right now, the changes would be the ones I'd mentioned, Mount Hood, and replacing some of the trees with other more land-based activities, and then changing the font color to be a more bold color, and maybe we can, maybe I can stretch it out so that the Scappus and Adventure Festival kind of flows left to right a little bit more instead of being stacked. Is that kind of what you're referencing?
I think you captured it all as usual, thank you.
Isaac, this is Counselor Miller. Having designed dozens of different graphics for marketing, the one thing that I would just ask council and the designer to be mindful of is small details, because what happens when you do a bunch of small details, I mean, I think this looks great, small details, you know, when they're big, always look really good, but what inherently ends up happening is the logo needs to be universal and fit on multiple different size marketing documents, and so when you squeeze these things down, it starts to look cluttered, and things start to push together, and the detail and the, the clean appeal just kind of, it gets lost. So I would just add to council just to make sure that, you know, and that, that be taken into consideration. I mean, the details, I think they look great, I mean, it's, it looks really professional, just in my experience with graphics, you know, think of, think of the way that McDonald's brands, think of the way that Fred Meyer's, it's usually always text, it's usually a certain text, they always keep their logos very clear, because no matter what size of space you have to put your logo on, it always works. When you get into graphics and pictures and stuff, it really takes away the, the versatility of, of the graphic.
Thank you, Counselor Miller, for pointing that out, because as you can see where it starts kind of in this large, medium, and small, and then you imagine, okay, if you add a bike, and then you add a walker, so I'm not opposed to keeping the kayak, but I'm curious what other people would think about removing it completely, and just having the sun, mountain, trees, and water.
And then not adding, say, the bicycle.
Not adding the bicycle, not adding.
Eliminating the activity.
Eliminating the activity, but just showing the outdoor, I think cleans it up, and as Counselor Miller's talking about, as you shrink it down, you lose sight of those tiny images.
Right, and, and he's right, it has to be scalable, that was one of the big things I've been looking at, so that, you know, no matter what it's going on, it works.
Well, I'm actually not in favor of adding anything, Isaac, a bike, or other activities, that is too much, and I am leaning more towards in favor of getting rid of the kayak activity and just having the water mountains.
So what I can do, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I have some input, too. I don't mind the kayakers much, I just don't like advertising other people's mountains that aren't in Columbia County or near Scappus. And whenever we do these outlooking logos, all we are doing is marketing Mount Hood, or Mount St. Helens, especially when it's that prominent in the logo. What are we doing, why are we advertising and marketing other destinations, when our goal is to market and advertise our destination? So for me, I would get rid of the mountain and replace it with something else that is here, or more likely to be seen when we're looking into Scappus, not out of Scappus, because we want to be focused inward, not outward.
With like our hill range?
I would much rather just have a hill range versus something that looks like Mount St. Helens or Mount Hood, just because I don't want to market to, hey, here we are in Scappus, look at Mount Hood, and that's exactly what we're saying when we put Mount Hood.
Visit this lake at the base of the mountain, it'll be super fun.
Yeah, this could, to me, this should be more the creek in the Scappus Bay, and where people are going to go kayaking, not as much as, the mountain, the mountain to me is a looking out and not a looking in.
Mr. Mayor, to your point, what comes to mind then, I mean, is it, is it fishing, is it, I mean, I, this has come up in, in my brain many times, is that, you know, we, we want to stick to things that Columbia County and Scappus actually is, instead of trying to make it something that it's not, and this is representative of something that's not, we don't have Mount Hood here, so.
We don't have Mount Hood here.
We don't have Mount Hood here, when, when we put Mount Hood in the logo, or even Mount St. Helens, it's over there.
I agree.
For, for me, what really comes to mind is the bay, you know, the river, so, you know, if we, we capitalize on what we have, right?
Exactly.
So what are those things?
At the bay, it could be trails.
I mean, we've got the trails, which is the hillside.
I'm just trying to inspire.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
I was even thinking like a, and what is the overview of like the CZ Trail, what is that map look, not like you want to impose a map on here, but what is, what do the lines of that trail look like?
Hard to make that.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, even if it was more definitive that it's a hill above Scappus.
We, the hills wouldn't, I don't think would do much. I disagree on the part, I do think we are advertising. I don't see why the candle didn't be on there, it's who we are, we're, we're putting money into that, and it's like, it's a nice fit, I think it would place the mountain just fine, unique. I do like the kayak there, because I think that people drive through Scappus, they don't know that we have a waterfront, and this would promote that a little bit. I wish we could promote the CZ Trail, but that's a little harder to do.
Once we get them here, we're going to promote it.
Yeah, and we've got, you know, 70-some miles of biking just off of, off of the road that's all over the Portland area to use.
So I think that looking in, looking in, you're coming into Scappus, you see the candle, is more looking in than looking out towards the mountains.
I just think we're promoting Scappus more than adventure.
It's still adventure.
Yeah. Yeah, I liked it, the theme, it's pretty, it's very good.
So I think what comes to mind for me anyway is kayaking, fishing, mountain biking, those are the three things, it's almost like, and this, you know, is relevant to the other conversations we're having too with branding. We need to pick something, and hone in on it, and start platforming on it. To me, those are the three things that we have, we need to make sure that we're not trying to make Scappus be something that it's not.
With this mountain, you mean, and all that?
Just in general.
Yeah, got it.
When, when it comes to branding, I mean.
Yeah, just be who you are.
So it sounds like we're talking about some significant changes to the logo.
Sorry, Isaac.
No, no, it's, this is, logos are hard, logos are hard, right? You're trying to capture a very complex identity, and, you know, make it work, so, so it sounds like we're talking hills instead of mountains, we're talking water, we're talking stretching the letters and making them stand out more, and then in terms of the other assets, you know, I heard kayaking, again, we have a kayaker, but that had been removed, so I don't, I'm not sure if we want to put that back, but we could, we can change the background.
Who, how many people would like to see the kayaker stay?
I don't mind having a kayaker or a mountain biker, if it can be simple and actually be expandable, I think that the biggest, sorry, I think the biggest thing is, is that it, that it can be scalable, so if you, if you can incorporate something.
You can fit a biker.
As a biker, as a shadow, as a, as a kayaker with a shadow, and, you know, a runner is a shadow, and it can be scalable and look good, I think that that, you know, that's incorporating what we want for Adventure Fest.
Okay.
That's kind of what I agree.
Another option would be to put all those silhouettes against the sun.
Oh, that is, yeah, yeah, mhm. When you remove the mountain, have that, yeah.
I would like to say one thing, I, I might have missed it, but I'm pretty sure at the last meeting, we talked about allowing Daniel to be involved with this, and the question was, can we afford it, and it was, yes was yes. I do think, not just dreaming, that, that was, was my understanding, is that we were going to contact Daniel, he's local, he knows this community, and of course, I had a particularly good experience with the Treadway graphic artist, so I don't have a lot of confidence.
I do remember that being very clear, but I don't recall, I think, I think we left it that we were going to trust this process, see what we got back, and then go from there, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Isaac, trying to help you with a little bit of guidance here, and just get the input from council here, what if we went back to, not taking away from what Counselor McHugh said at all, because I wasn't here for last meeting, so I don't, I don't know about that discussion, but why, can we just give Treadway some guidance that we're trying to capture potentially a mountain biker, a fisherman, and the canoe, and just, just tell them, you know, our general conversation here about what we're trying to capture doesn't mean they have to put all those things in, but just leave the creative side to them, just tell them that that's really what we kind of narrowed it down to, does that, that work?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, you know, and I, I'll still, I, I'll still, you know, transmit to them, you know, that what we were talking about with the, the, the lettering and the font style, and kind of spacing it out a little bit, but the conversation seems to be cycling around the water aspect with those three different activities specifically, and then if we're going to have something in the backdrop, it sounds like whatever design works best, whether it be, you know, it's just a sun, whether it be some of the, more like the hills that we have right to the west of Scappus would be more appropriate, and then letting them take it from there, does that sound like what you're saying?
That is what I'm saying, but I don't know if there's the council feels the same way.
That, that's kind of what I was saying, what.
I guess, so what I'm hearing is, is no candle, what I'm hearing, everybody's here saying, except me, is saying no candle, and then also no Daniel. I mean, I, I don't understand why we don't use our own graphic artists, for them to have a shot at this, and not that he particularly wants to, but I just have some confidence in him.
The, so, sure, so just to speak to the budget really quick, because we didn't really talk about that, the package that we brought before you was inclusive of the design work through Treadway Events Designer, and so the, whatever the design work would be with Dan would require another, some, some more work to, to make that happen. That would be outside of the allocation, or we'd have to, or we'd have to.
About that last time.
Right, but there was no formal council action, which is why that we hadn't reached out yet, so we can certainly do that, but that would require, I think, it would require a little more formal direction to go and expend that extra money for that particular portion of this project.
Mr. Mayor?
Already identified the money was there, so that was a yes.
So as far as, I, I think maybe a middle ground on this would be to see, I don't know how you feel, but just see what Treadway comes back with with revisions, and then if we're still not on the same page, then that's when we can look at that, I don't, I mean, as far as the candle goes, I, I I agreed with what Megan said earlier on the logo about this being adventure, and this is kind of separate from our city's identity, I mean, I know you want to keep the branding, you know, kind of consistent, and I think that the candle should be involved in our primary branding at some point, maybe something, that's something that we can look at, because I think the candle is something that is really specific, and it's Scappus. But I, I also see the point that Counselor Grayson made, that this is, we, we kind of are trying to capture the adventure piece, I don't know how the candle comes in, unless people are repelling from the candle, I don't know how the adventure piece is going to really come into play with the candle. That's my only thought on that. I'm sorry, I.
We have graphic artists.
Isaac, do you feel like you have what you need?
I do, it sounds like we want to see this logo back again on the 21st with revisions, and kind of go from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Isaac, what is our timeline on this, when was Treadwell wanting to have this as a advert, you know, to be able to advertise out?
Sure, so to be blunt, we were, we were hoping for the beginning of February, part of that's because that's only eight months to do sponsorship and fundraising, which really means about four or five. To really get a good, robust fundraising going, it takes at least a couple of months to, you know, have your package design, start figuring out who your targets are, go reach out to them, have the discussions, and those kind of things, so, you know, we didn't really have like a specific target date, because we knew that the discussion logo would probably take a little longer, but now that we're looking at the end of March, that'll cut it down to probably two or three months to try to fundraise enough, because typically by the time the summer rolls around, everybody's kind of gone through their sponsorship budgets for events for the year, because most happen in the summer.
And so a good note for council is for next year, as we do this planning event, that we already have kind of some ideas and get ahead of the curve on this, so, thank you for that, Isaac.
Well, hopefully the logo would stay, no?
It would be updated, or you just keep the same logo.
Point of clarification for me, so is the local graphic design, is the, just to clarify, is the local graphic designer, is he offering to do that for free to Donia's time, or is that a charge?
I don't even know if he's.
He hasn't even been contacted, is my understanding.
Correct, I have not reached out to him, I'd have to ask if he even has time, I'm working without him on another project, and he's been pretty busy with shifting his business over to a new place and expanding, so I could, I could put out some initial feelers as well, in case we have questions or you have questions at the next meeting.
I, I think it's like what you said, Isaac, if we're going to do that, then that needs to be the consensus of council, so we need to make a decision if we're going to do that or not. It's not fair to you to move forward without direction here.
So you'd move forward with or without?
We need to give him direction on whether or not we want to reach out to graphic designer or not, or stick with the Treadway.
Do I have a motion to indicate which way you want to go?
Because I envision what we'd be doing is we would be to take what, I don't know, in a way, right now, he, he really can't take what somebody else has done and change it, that wouldn't be, I don't think, so, and looking at it, yes, realistically, probably need to allow Treadway to come back with something, because I think we would be at least a couple steps further down the road if we involve Daniel at this point, if we involved him previously, we'd be, okay, but I think right now with their timeline and things, we probably almost have to stick with Treadway and what they come up with. Do you think one thing we have to determine, though, we've said four different things as far as activities, I don't think we can. You think one thing we have to determine, though, we've said four different things as far as, uh, activities. I don't think we can use four things on there, even without the candle. Uh, we've said kayakers, which I really like that kayaker, said a biker, fisherman, and a runner. Uh, and, uh, they all fit, but I don't think we can do four. So we probably need to give them direction on which three we want to use.
So, um, my recommendation would be that any one of those things, uh, would probably be, I mean, if they can come back with designs on a few of them, if they have time, or whatever one they think is going to be most universal and work. I think we leave that to the designer to determine, so long as we're all, we're all okay with any one of those things. I, I just would be a little hesitant to tell them that they have to do like the biker or the, um, you know, the fisherman or whatever, and not knowing what they're up against on the design side. So if we just give them some options and some generalized direction, I think that's probably the best.
Saying then to give them, you know, all four of them, that these are possibilities and use them as best you can.
Right, yeah. And not to mean that they use all of those things. Probably just won't. That's up to them. Yeah.
You got, uh, direction, Isaac?
Yes, I do. I believe I have it now.
Off the table, right?
So, uh, we're looking at potentially adding design elements, stretching the words, making the font darker and bolder, focusing on the river aspects, and making it look nice with one, two, or possibly three of the different activities, potentially mountains or sun in the background, depending on what fits with the design and the colors.
Perfect.
And please tell Treadway thank you for coming back and receiving our feedback. Um, and, and continually checking in. I know that there is a timeline and, but appreciate that this is part of the package we paid for and that they're giving us the product that we want. Thank you.
Absolutely. I will make sure that they are where.
Thank you, Isaac.
Thank you, Isaac.
Thank you.
All right. Next item, audit review. Mr. Tushir.
Can you hear me?
Steve, yes.
You can hear me.
Uh, turn it up a little bit.
Alrighty. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, good, good, good. Well, uh, that was a very interesting conversation to listen to, um, about your logo, and I'm pretty excited for you guys to, uh, and take that endeavor. That's a challenge for sure. Um, and, and then segueing into something is not exciting as an audit, it's kind of tough. So I'm going to do my best to make this interesting, but, uh, uh, anyway, so, um, thank you for the opportunity to do the audit again this year. Um, as you may be aware, um, we converted from a cash basis statement to a what's called GAAP basis. GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles basis, uh, financial statements. So what used to be very simple financial statements is no longer that at all. From an auditing standpoint, the audit went very well. Jill does a great job of.
Steve, can I interrupt you for, just, just for the, just for the record, for those people listening in or who will listen to this meeting later, can you please describe the difference between those two models? And, and what that, what that change looks like? Thank you.
Sure, uh-huh. Yep, I was going to get to that, but I will do that right now. Um, so cash basis, um, is what we also call pure cash basis. So the only, if you look at a balance sheet from cash basis, the only thing that you're going to see for an asset is cash, cash and investments. Um, and then of course, fund balances, the other side of the balance sheet on that. There are no accruals, so there would be no accounts payable, no accounts receivables, no recognition of capital assets or long-term debt. Very, very simple. Um, many, many cities and school districts that we audit use cash basis for their budgetary purposes. Um, and so we still see cash basis a lot, but to be GAAP basis, generally accepted accounting principles, you need to add all of those things that I just mentioned on the, um, various different statements, all the different accruals. Um, and if you, I don't know, do you guys have the financial statements in front of you or on a PDF that you can look at?
Yes.
Okay. So if you were to go to the statement of net position, which is page 22 of the PDF, or page 14 of the financial statements, this gives you a, a good view of all of those things that are now part of your financial statements. And this statement is one of two that is what is considered a full accrual set of financial statements. That, that includes all of the assets, all of the liabilities. Um, there are two other things you don't hear of too often in the world of accounting called deferred outflows and deferred inflows. Those are all now part of the financial net position of the city, this statement. And, uh, you'll, you'll see quite a few things there. Um, we've always reported in the notes of the financial statements, the capital assets that are now appearing on the financial statements, along with long-term debt. Um, but they were never incorporated into the financial statements. So with this, uh, change, there's also a note describing all of the changes or the dollar amounts of the changes. Um, that is at the, at the very end of the notes to the financial statements, which is on page 59 of the notes on the, of the printed version and page 70 of the PDF. And what that is, is just a summary basically of what was reported the prior year for an ending balance. And what the restated balance would have been if we were doing the accrual basis. Um, so in all of those different ending balances, those are reflected on that page. Is that description makes sense for everybody? Adequate enough?
Yes.
Yep. Does anybody have any questions more about that that they'd like to ask?
No questions.
Okay. Um, I guess I can think of one that maybe, uh, would be good to address that's not being asked, but, uh, the question of why did we do this, um, might be a good one, I suppose. Um, and, and really, um, what is, you know, a standard accepted practice these days are these financial statements you have now. So when you're talking about going out for, uh, bonds or other borrowing debt, uh, type things, the, the creditors, the lenders, the bond buyers are more inclined to take seriously these financial statements than just pure cash. And then so doing would probably be inclined to give you a lower, uh, interest rate or potentially lower interest rate. Um, so that is the primary purpose for doing this, um, in my humble opinion, anyway. Um, it does give, in some respects, these, this, that first statement, that statement of net position and the statement that follows it, uh, called the statement of activities. It paints a more complete picture of the city and its, um, financial position. It's important to understand with a lot of the bigger numbers in there, unfortunately, they reflect what are estimated values. In particular, capital assets, value of some of those assets are estimated values, um, for things that were around prior to the year 2000. Um, there was no requirement for governments to account for and depreciate capital assets. Um, so we had to do, uh, historical best guess of the original cost value. And then related to that, depreciation is, if nothing else, uh, an estimate of the, the use of the asset, the cost of the use of the asset. Um, so those are, uh, um, estimates for sure. And then you're going to see a whole bunch of different things, pension-related deferrals and, and OPEB-related deferrals, um, in the deferred outflow section. Down at the bottom of the liabilities, you're going to see net pension liability and OPEB obligation. Um, in the deferred inflows, there's a bunch, there are three different numbers related to deferrals there also. All those are rather significant estimates that have to do with, um, PERS and the, the liabilities that are arrived at by, um, an actuarial, um, company. And then we get those numbers from PERS. They're audited, uh, liabilities specific to each, uh, government. The PERS, uh, accumulates, um, retirement savings for their employees. OPEB stands for other post-employee, employment benefits. And there are some unusual, I will say, um, liabilities related to those that are also part of the required financial statements these days. So all of those rather large numbers are estimates. Um, so it's, as much as we want these statements to reflect an accurate picture of, uh, the city's net position, um, it's important to recall or remember that those, a lot of those big numbers are estimates. So that, that's, that's the basic nature again of the, uh, difference between cash and accruals and some of the important features of those two statements. Any other questions about that at all?
One quick recommendation, Mayor. Go ahead.
Will we be doing any type of training with our budget committee to help them transition into our new, uh, budgeting model?
It's a great question. The, the full accrual numbers are not related to budgetary accounting at all, quite honestly. So they are, there is no need for the budget committee or any of you guys necessarily to, uh, try and understand all of this or try and adapt it into the budget, because, uh, you'll still be doing budgetary, um, uh, accounting, budgetary planning on what's called the modified accrual basis or cash basis. Um, either one doesn't deal with all these large accruals. So for example, when you, when we, typically when we pay down a debt, we record the interest expense as an expense and then, and this full accrual stuff, of course, the principal reduces the liability. For budgetary purposes, you're still going to just concern yourselves with the total debt service as a combined amount of principal and interest. So there's not really any budgetary changes that, uh, you really need to worry about with all of this.
City manager rings.
I was just going to say that the, the actual budget you all receive, and Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's not going to look drastically different than in years past. So we're not expecting, you know, to drag things like this in front of them and try to make it, you know, that, that's not the plan.
Perfect. I just want to know that it's digestible for those that put a set of eyes on it.
Right, they don't do this for, they don't need to do it for a living, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, yep. Um, so, uh, just to back up a little bit then, um, just started to talk about how the audit went. And it went very well. Um, as you guys probably are, I know, everybody is very well aware of how difficult these last couple of years have been with COVID and trying to work remotely and all of those things. Um, and we did all of the work remotely this year for the audit. Um, I can only say that Jill, Jill did a great job of getting us all the documents we needed and variety of different scanned PDFs and this and that. Um, so it went very well. Um, I, you know, the audit report itself, um, one of the primary things you guys hire us to do is to issue a report that says that the financial statements are without material misstatement. And that's what my report on page one A and B is trying to say without going into all the details of it. Um, there are also a lot of other things that we audit related to compliance issues, um, that are reported on the last page of the audit. And those are all state-required audit, uh, statements. Um, so we make sure that you guys are depositing your funds according to Oregon statutes, that you haven't exceeded the debt limits, that you're following Oregon budget law properly, um, that you have the correct insurance, that any outside sources of funding you get, you're complying with. Issues about public highway, um, use, uh, funds and the use of those funds. Um, and a couple of others there related to contracts and purchasing, uh, and surplus funds. And, and our audit work, we did not find any issues of non-compliance with that. So, um, good, good report there as well. Um, so overall, everything went very well. You know, I look at the city and you guys are in a really strong financial position as far as my perspective goes, looking, um, looking around at other cities, um, in the state. We audited about 15 other cities in the state, um, of varying different sizes. And, um, Scappus is certainly, uh, in a very strong position compared to those. Uh, let's see. I can go into a lot more detail if anybody's interested in the financial statements or try and explain more how they are laid out, if you like, um, since they are new and complex, but I also don't want to put you all to sleep, so. Uh, if anybody would like to hear some of that or a little summary of that, I'd be happy to do that. Otherwise, um, I can stop right here and let you guys get on with your meeting.
Uh, Councilor Salsky has one question.
Okay. Very good.
Steve, I appreciate the work that you put into this to help kind of point us in the right direction moving forward. I would ask, are there any, I don't know if red flags is the right word. What are the opportunities for us to be, um, use this tool most effectively moving forward?
Uh, that's a great question. Um, I would say that, um, for, you know, the, the trouble that you guys mostly, not trouble, but what you face more than anything, um, is, um, your budgetary, uh, issues and staying compliant with, uh, your budget and the Oregon budget law in that regard. The, the analytical opportunities with the full accrual financial statements, um, you can try, you can begin to analyze, you can start to build, um, a history of expectations. Um, you know, like as in looking at your, um, a good example would be the, the net investments in capital assets, which is the combined amount of capital assets, less any debt related to it. Honestly, that is probably one that, um, the lenders look at and they look at your, uh, debt to, uh, income ratios and those kinds of things. Um, so, uh, the, the full accrual, uh, picture just gives you a more complete, more, um, matched set of data in terms of your actual expenses versus, um, what the cash basis is, which is purely just really cash flow-driven statements. So depending on what it is that you're looking to do, there's just a lot more opportunities for analytical work. I don't know if that addresses the question well enough, but that would be the, a general overview of what you can do with that. Does that help at all?
Very much so. I appreciate the response.
Any other questions? All right, Steve. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Jill.
Thank you, Jill.
Thank all of you guys too. Um, I, I really do have my hats off to all of you guys that are on the council and the mayor. Um, that's a, a difficult job at best and, uh, you don't get thanked nearly enough for what you do. So I'll tell you, thank you so much for your service to your community. And I wish you all have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Bye-bye.
Hi. All right. Next item. I'm, item number three, resolution number 22 dash 05. Resolution adopting optional local building code, code permits. Mr. Van Damelin. Welcome.
Kind of fun to see you here.
Yeah. A lot, so. Good evening, everybody. Um, as we've explained in the staff report, Oregon Building Code Div.
Um, as we've explained in the staff report, Oregon Building Code Division has removed some of the permits being required statewide and has left it up to the local jurisdictions for adoption. A lot of these are things that are outside of adopt, or occupied structure. Um, I feel these codes could impact public safety and should be permitted and. Do you guys have questions on what these things are or any, anything?
Well, first, thank you for finding or noting a red flag and bringing it to our attention and, and seeking the best for our community. So that, that speaks volumes of your leadership. So thank you.
Mayor, go ahead.
Don, do you know any communities that are just kind of going to the wayside with these and why would they?
No, most of the, most of the jurisdictions that I deal with a lot, all of Columbia County are either have adopted or are in the process of adopting. Places like, for example, cell towers are one of the things that have been taken out. Here, our cell towers are leaning over the top of the foot. You know, on the grandstand, maybe out in some of the eastern Oregon areas, those, those wouldn't need to be permitted because they're just standalone in the middle of nowhere. So most of the jurisdictions that I deal with are. And they've always been. It's just last few years that separated.
So what was the reason the state
Um.
From mandatory to optional?
It, it has to do with legislature didn't want them outside of the occupied structure where they really want. So they're leaving it, you know, the things that aren't in occupied structures are leaving that to the local. Peter.
I think most of us believe that these will be returned back to mandatory. This was a decision that was made by a certain person who's, who's no longer there. And um, a lot of us are really surprised that someone would think that you shouldn't do an inspection on a swimming pool. Where if that fails, I mean, that could have a catastrophic um, effect for not just that person, but, but their neighbors as well. Um, and so I, if I were wagering, I would wager on all these being, being returned um, back to the statewide mandatory.
Thank you. Do I have any more questions or motion or?
Mr. Mayor?
Council President.
The council adopt resolution number go five, resolving opting local building.
Hearing a motion from Councilor McHugh. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Council Lasowski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
You. Next item five, approval of the twenty-two, twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three council goals. Ms. Rains.
Yes, Mayor and Council. So this is the uh, draft version of the goals that came out of your retreat. Um, so I worked with a consultant and we tried to put together all of the feedback, you know, whether that was wordsmithing some things or adding new goals, new goals altogether. Um, so you'll see that the, you have your standard um, list of goals. And then also, one of the things that was part of uh, her um, package for the city was this report you'll see that actually kind of summarizes the day and also lists the goals for your review as well. Essentially, at this point, I'm just looking to see if there's anything in here you don't feel is, you know, accurate or you want to change. If not, then, you know, obviously it's, it's up for you all to adopt so that the department heads can put it in their budget and um, we can start making action plans.
Did have a question regarding the Parks and Rec master plan. It's something, sir, timeline on that, uh, are we waiting for something on that or?
Well, well, first of all, we did want to make sure that the goals were approved and then it would be budgeted for in this next fiscal year. So you'd be looking, we were thinking, you know, so long as that was approved by the budget committee and you all, that, you know, we, we could start putting that together this summer, the RFP to go out for that if, you know.
We did the master plan ourselves previously.
We did. We did.
Would we be putting it out or for somebody else to do it?
I would recommend putting it out. Um, I think, I think that we, particularly with the capital improvement plan, um, we did the best we could with the information we had. But, you know, it wasn't put together by any kind of professional engineer or anything like that. And I do think the estimates um, in terms of cost are pretty far off um, and aren't really reflective of what those items are going to actually cost us at the end of the day.
Which items are we talking about?
The, our capital improvement projects that are identified in that plan.
Talking about Vista Park, is that what you're talking about?
Yes, pretty much all of the capital improvement projects in that master plan.
Trying to think of what they would be, so.
Oh, well, and, and we've bought property since then, so we actually have new projects to put in and probably some to take out. But in there would have been, um, I think we had improvements to Miller at the time. We had Chief and Comley in there, which is done. Um, Vista Park, uh, I don't, I think we had identified Chapman Landing as a piece of property we hoped to acquire, but we hadn't yet. Um, I think, I think, I think even the improvements to Heritage Park might have been in there. I'd have to go back and look at it. Um, but it's, it's pretty, um, we've actually accomplished a lot and I think it's, it is actually fairly outdated.
I, I agree. So those reasons you're saying that we need to have somebody else in and do it for us.
That's, I, I would recommend having at least someone come in and help us with it. We could still, you know, we could still use, um, like we've done in the past. We could, we could have the Parks Committee be a technical advisory committee and work with us on it. They could still be involved, but I think, but I think that unfortunately, there were some things that didn't happen with the last process that have just made it harder for us to continue to use that document without any updates. Yes, I would recommend we ask them on.
Mr. Mayor, just to go off the comment you said, or that Council McHugh brought up about doing it in-house before and now going out for it. It's, it's my understanding, or I'm trying to remember, was there, was there an intern that put that together?
There was a couple of different interns.
And, and that passed over hands and this wasn't, these weren't individuals that necessarily had experience writing master plans or putting master plans together. And right now, we're working off a document that I wouldn't say is quote, not as professional as it could be, but it's not at a level that we need it to be in order to get some major projects done. And by having a, a professional person helping and assisting us with that, we'd have some more realistic timelines, goals, uh, dollar amounts. Um, just in general, be a much more accurate picture. I'm seeing head nods from
Yes.
real people in the room. Okay, thank you.
It was part of that process and a lot more thought went into it than I'm getting right now.
It was a part of the process too, yeah. I.
The Park and Rec Committee were the ones.
Mm-hmm.
Anyway, whatever it was, I, I do understand what you're saying. I just don't want to, got a big bunch of money to bring somebody in and do the whole thing for us. I'd rather see like an advisor or something like that. I know that's a topic for another day, but I just think that got a lot of expertise on that park committee right now and I'd like to utilize that, make them feel like they're really part of what's happening.
Well, they would be fully involved with the process. Um, however, I s- I would recommend that we hire a professional engineering group to help us with that process.
So part of how we get grants is by having those sort of accurate figures. And when we're talking about someplace particularly like Chapman Landing, that involves the uh, Army Corps of Engineers. That involves a lot of different entities that require coordination. And then, you know, based on the topography and all those issues, we are somewhat limited into what we can put there. And so part of having an outside expert is providing those kind of estimates and laying out the process. So when we go to the State Parks to get a grant, everybody has an understanding of, um, this is what it will take. This is the timeline that's reasonable. Um, and, and that just makes it a lot easier to leverage grant dollars statewide.
I'd also point out too, that when we completed the Chief and Comley Park project, I think there was some general upset that we had majorly overspent on the project. Well, I think in fairness, the, the estimate for that project in the master plan was grossly underestimated. I don't even think it was really so much that the project was so horribly over budget. I don't think there was enough money identified in the master plan. So even just in the realm of expectations and what things are going to take, I think having a more up-to-date document, especially that piece, is really, really important.
I agree with that. My idea was that those were all estimates and that we got to write a grant for a particular project, we would redo that, get more accurate information. Master plan isn't the sole piece of information for all those projects.
No, it's not, but I also think that having one that's that out of date doesn't help us.
Mr. Mayor. How much uh, do we expect that to cost a consultant for something like that? Any ideas?
Depends. Um, I mean, master plans like that can, again, now I'm, I'm thinking of water master plan or wastewater or these ones that are probably a bit more complex and take longer. Those can be a couple hundred thousand dollars. With this particular one, again, I don't know that those are exact good comparison, but the, you know, it depends on how long it takes.
I've seen them for as low as ten thousand.
Getting a bit off topic.
Very little bit off the topic at this point. Um, oh, going all the, all over the place here. Um. It's a discussion for another day. What, the goal is to do the master plan. So the only contention that I, I don't like the title for the Parks goal. I a hundred percent preferred the previous one of having a measurable goal of every person being within ten minute walk. I can tell you today, we're sixty-four percent of the people. I can tell you, I can go to a map that shows us where we need parks. I can look into the data where it will give us scores based on schools, adding those amenities, park amenities, equity, health, climate, all different types of data that we can look at just from the Trust for Public Lands Parks or website. It's easy and, you know, a goal is supposed to be measurable. Can I measure it? I just don't think the title of that goal measures anything. My opinion.
I agree with that. There's something catchy about the ten minutes park. In the past, I'm not sure what that, and it seems like it would anyway.
We can certainly change it back. We changed it based on feedback we received during the session.
And I'm completely in favor of the revision, so. Developing a diverse and accessible park system for people of all abilities means that we're going to be looking at the assets that we already have and things that we can add to what, again, is already in hand. But then seeking out new opportunities to do that. And, and I know that the mayor is very in favor of having it, you know, these within ten minute walks. But I think it's more important that we provide sustainable and accessible and, and diverse opportunities to, to what we already have.
I see that as an objective and not the goal. It's one of the objectives that meets the goal, that what, we want everyone to be within a ten minute walk of park. But one of the objectives within that is to assure that our parks plans, our parks have accessibility for all different age groups.
But, but I think.
Because that's not a goal that I can measure. That's not a task that I can accomplish.
So to counter that, not everybody can walk at the same pace of ten minutes. Not everybody can walk at all. And I don't think that by putting a time that I can get from point A to point B at a park in ten minutes is, but that's my personal, I'm not going to argue about it. If we want to change it, that's fine. I know that our, our
So the, the.
Goal is, is there.
The underlying goal though is to improve what we already have and then keep our eye open for other opportunities. For example, additional properties that we can develop into parks, correct? Are, are we all on the same page there?
Confirmed.
Okay, well then, that to me, that accomplishes what we're trying to do or does it not?
So what's your wording?
I wasn't proposing specific wording, I was just trying to make.
The wording is fine how it is presented. Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I would say so.
Well, we're approving the goals tonight, so I think it's important that we go across the table here and decide what we'd like it to say because this is how it's going to be approved.
That, Mr. Mayor, that's your one amendment to uh, the council goals as presented is the, the rewordage of goal.
Re, back to where it was, because it is actually measurable, you know, I mean, yeah, not everyone walks at the same pace, but I think they're looking at the average person, average walking and whether or not. I can tell you, down by the schools is where we don't have parks. The whole area where the senior retirement village is down back behind By, Bymark, there's no parks. I can tell you that the northwest part, while it says there's no parks, is where Vista Park is, which, when it's developed, will be accessible. Then we've got the southwest section that doesn't really have any parks. Just by sitting here looking on my phone at a map, I can see that. I can go to another map that, the other page, it tells me that sixty-four percent of our residents are within a ten minute walk of a goal. And, you know, they don't just make this up and throw it out there. I mean, this is, you know, the Trust for Public Lands and it's working with different organizations. So it's not just, you know, a fly-by-night organization putting together, can every person walk at different speeds? It's actually looking at it, how you can do it. The most equitable way to have parks is to make sure they're in every neighborhood.
So is there maybe a way just to rephrase that or? I, I, I would say both. You guys make a very good point and I, and I actually like the idea of having the, um, having it suggest about being accessible park system for people of all abilities. But is there a way to include both? I mean, is that?
I would say developing a diverse and accessible park system for people of all abilities within a ten minute walk. Still keep it within that ten minute walk. Because I think the goal, the vision goal should be, we want everyone to have access, easy access to a park. Got to go all the way across town to go to a park.
I have a comment. I feel like the wording of goal number four follows the flow of the wording that is presented in every other goal. Um, and I think that I, I thi- I think that if, um, I thi- you know, you know, you're very much in support of purchasing land and, and buying land and making sure that there's opportunities within ten minutes. And this, and, and that wording of that goal has been on the list for several years now and there hasn't been any property acquired on the east side or any of these places that are continually, you know, not within the ten minute walk. And so I feel like by keeping it, changing the goal might actually accomplish what we're trying to do. As Councilor Miller said, we can all agree, we're trying to create spaces that are accessible and available to everyone. And I feel like the way it was previously written, we weren't getting anywhere with it.
Yeah, I mean, it was two, two years through COVID, a lot was done during that time.
So I don't, I don't want to beat this up, but to me, when I read this, it says, develop a diverse and accessible park system for people of all abilities. I would consider accessible, meaning that what you're trying to accomplish, Mayor, that it's, you know.
I'm just saying that a goal should, it's, but it's not measurable.
Understood.
What's the measure?
Understand.
Simplicity of the other one was it was simply measurable.
So goal number two, enhance community livability. How, I don't know, understand how you can measure that comparatively to what you're talking about.
Maybe some wording that would.
So if you'd like to change every goal, then maybe that's what you're trying to, to recommend.
I just, and I said, develop a diverse and accessible park system for people of all abilities within a ten minute walk. Simple, adds a few words, throughout a compromise.
I don't see them as exclusive each other. It seems like they're both.
That's why I was saying, you know, within a ten minute walk.
I don't, it, it's worded now, there's no language that jumps out at you. Lack of better term, uh, if we do talk to some homeowners, which we've never really done that, you know, I, I, I know some of the homeowners that might be open to that, if we went and talked to them about, but shoot, the other thing.
No, that, I, my hand's raised. I'm not speaking.
So what I'm saying is that I think it could be, it's nice to be able to say that, well, we're looking to have parks within a twenty minute, ten, ten minute walk for all of our community and your piece of ground fits this. Actually, I just see it almost, I won't say like gimmick, but it's also a nice catchy kind of thing that transfers to the people more than this really nicely written statement here, but.
Um, to Pete Mc, or Councilor McHugh's point, um, about contacting property owners, et cetera, that goal had been written that way and in the last several years that it has, those actions were, I mean, there's nothing we can do with property that doesn't exist and those, those actions. And those, those actions of, of going out and knocking on property owner's doors didn't happen when the goal was written the other way. I have no other comment.
So the, the goal was written this way right as we went into COVID. So, I mean, astounding that we're two years away into it and, oh, it didn't work, let's run away from it. Let's not even consider a compromise where it just says, we're adding the words within a 10-minute walk of home at the end of the sentence currently done. Simple, it gives that context and it creates a, but yeah.
I think it needs to say 10 for his initiative.
From my opinion, I propose council adopted it with amended to include the 10 minutes and then we can reevaluate it next retreat.
I'm fine with that. It's a goal.
Yeah.
In context, it's a goal. I'm fine with that. I mean, I, like I said, I, I kind of think that you can add it in there and we can have a statement that, that tries to attack both. It is a goal. Think that we can compromise and
Agreed.
So the wording would be develop a diverse and accessible park system for people of all abilities within a 10-minute walk home? Or did somebody say something about a little more defining of that? I mean,
I think, I think within a 10-minute walk is fine.
Within a 10-minute walk of home? Or within a 10-minute walk, within a 10-minute walk?
I think as long as our understanding is on the record is all that counts and is that what we're talking about is a 10-minute walk from home?
Yes.
Okay, so it's on the record that it's a 10-minute walk from home.
The actual language is within a 10-minute walk.
Yes.
Trying to keep it short.
All right, any other discussion on the goals?
Uh, just a big thank you to SSW Consulting for their work at the retreat. I found it very engaging and also an opportunity for us to be very open in our thoughts and allowing for that open dialogue to have its time in place. So thank you.
Second that.
Thank you.
All right. Are we doing a motion to approve it then? Do we have a motion to approve it as amended? So move hearing a motion from Councilor Losowski is our second.
Second.
Your second, any further discussion? Do you know, all those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, 2022 team agreement.
Yes, Mayor and Council, you'll see a copy of the draft team agreement. At the retreat, you know, we looked at this, we didn't make any significant changes, so it's probably the same document as last year and it's before you for approval. And obviously any adjustments if you'd like to make.
We have a motion. Any questions?
I have a comment. Um, we had a, a citizen, Paul Friedrich come in last, uh, last council meeting and he was very gracious in his comments and thanking us for our service and, and having us, you know, he used the words like, quote, don't be so hard on yourself. And I, I appreciate that. However, I think that these discussions were really important to have in our, in our session and that it's important that we do demand the best of each other and for our community. And that, you know, that, that the dialogue from my perspective and from my place, the comments that I make or made during that, that session has nothing to do with us agreeing all of the time. There's you get nowhere with that. And that's not, not what I ever have touched on in terms of following these agreements is that we need to agree, but it just has to do with mutual respect towards each other. And just as importantly to the staff that we work with and that works for the city. And unfortunately, some of the comments that, and the discussion that were created is because, in my opinion, that wasn't always occurring. And that I think it's just important that we're always maintaining our appropriate roles beyond these chambers and just to clarify for, for Paul, who was listening in to our session, I thank him for his observations of how we do work together, but, but know that I personally don't take having been voted into this position lightly and that if there's any opportunity for personal and professional growth, that I think that's important, that we do ask the best of ourselves. And I'm just so grateful that this council you know, still has this document in place and, and that we can work together and continue to do the good work. Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Talked. Mayor, Councilor Pauling.
I move council adopt the team agreement as presented.
Hearing a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
So my Councilor Miller, is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, that was my
Uh, City Manager Rains, I, I take it that you would like for us to sign and hand these back to you?
Yes, and we can get you copies that don't have the draft watermark and we'll, yes.
Know where you work.
Right, you know where I find you.
She knows how to find you too.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I don't know, I'm probably not as well.
Anything else? All those in favor, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, appointments to the 50-year plan stakeholder advisory committee.
Thank you.
Fine, yes. I just had concerns about the list. And first of all, all the people, I'm talking about the committee members, not the, the agency partners, but all the people on that list are, are either elected officials or aid employees somewhere within government. They're, they're committee members on already functioning with the city, or they're already really highly connected with the city. And only five of those people, I think I'm figuring correctly there, live in the city. And I think it's important that the majority of the people on that committee live in the city. And, uh, I mean, we need one input from the outside, but they shouldn't be the major influence in this whole process. Uh, I think we need to have two additional committee members. I think that they need to live in the city. I really think there's an age thing there. Most of these people, I'm, I'm the oldest, I'm not on the committee, but I'm, I'm old. These people are, all of them are, we don't have any young families, we don't have any new faces. One of our goals as a council is to, is to bring in more people to to encourage people to participate in city, uh, city government, city functioning, it's written in our goals. And this is a great opportunity to do that. I live in this little subdivision over here and there's 25 homes in there. Probably a number of people that would be happy to serve in this committee that nobody in city government here knows they exist probably, except for Water Bill, maybe here or there. I think it's really important that we use this important committee to engage some people that are not engaged in the community right now. All the people on this list, they're all great people. They're already, already engaged. We don't have any new thinking there. There's no creativity there. There's no no freshness. And so my proposal is that we we add two people and live in the city that they would be, hopefully they would be younger end of things.
When's, when's the meeting? This month? So obviously they wouldn't be, couldn't appoint them. We could appoint the committee as it is and then reach out for two additional members for future meetings. I think would be the best that we could do.
There are people, I'll have that many, a lot of people that are doing this aren't really that connected with it. So I think maybe it's our responsibility to turn in a couple of names each or one name each that somebody might, like, I don't know, that hard to go to other community, try to identify people. Not really fair to Isaac or, but you're connected very well in the need to help find your names.
And when I read through this, and I know Pat's connected to the community, Christine Turner's connected to the community, she has an office across the street. Tyler Miller, I don't know about him, he's always in Montana. Yeah. Tim Holmes is really, and that Santiago is very connected into the community. Jill Graham is, Richard is, Jeff Weiss, the libraries, Paul Vogel, you know, he's and Brian Rosenthal, I mean, he built
But there's only five that live in the city there, and maybe not even five, right, but guessing a lot of them.
Well, the, the counter to that, though, is, is that all of them are involved with providing services to the city, though. That's, that's the only counterbalance to that. I get what you're saying.
Why is that more important than getting some fresh?
I'm not saying it's more important.
That's why I'm saying, that's why I'm saying that I'm, I think we can add two people, they just wouldn't be added before the first meeting.
Yeah, I mean, I think that one of the things to keep in mind with this process is this process is a highly technical land use process. So I think that some members of the community kind of view this as a community visioning process and kind of creating a roadmap. And in some respects, it creates a land use roadmap. So it's to look at our existing urban growth boundary and then future growth and to create this kind of reserves, but it's, it's a very technical land use or series of land use processes rather than a kind of branding, visioning. This is kind of the future of our city process. So we could add, we could add two people, um, kind of with fresh views. I would just want to make sure that they understand that a lot of the things that are going to happen are dictated by topography, flood plains and population estimates.
And they'll be as boring as the, uh,
It, I've, look, I've been
Speak for yourself.
I have been through all of these processes before. I've experienced them all and they're not exciting, even for a land use attorney. So I just want to make sure that people have expectation.
So here's a motion that I'd like to hear if it's minimal. Motion to approve committee list with the direction to add two community members that live within the city, live inside the city limits to the committee. And for each council member to find one person to get to meet so I can vet them to appoint them. Yeah.
Isaac. Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm very happy to see that, uh, that the committee will be chaired by, uh, former Councilor Pat Kessie. I would just ask maybe that we look at re-creating his, his name of his role. Maybe to commu, community member at large. I think there might be questions raised if that was the title used.
If we're talking about city limits?
I mean, yeah.
Citizen of community member at larger. And then two citizens at large.
We're all excited about Patrick doing this.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mr. Mayor? I, yeah, I, you know, P, on your, on your comment, I, you know, I would have no problem adding two additional members. I think that the more, you know, I mean, obviously the, to Peter's point, it's probably going to be boring for them. They probably won't be super excited to what the direction, or not necessarily direction, the, uh, the content, because it's going to be very technical. However, I, I think the more the merrier. I would love to have, if there's two people, obviously we can find that would be, you know, dedicated to putting time in and thought process through it. And, you know, questioning whatever needed, I think that'd be a good addition.
And the, whoever becomes the executive director of the senior center, we are slating to fill that role.
And then just to clarify, Peter, your statement about visioning and branding and whatnot, that's not to say that community members at large won't be able to participate in listening sessions and brainstorming and providing input. I believe we have several events already mapped out, um, over the next couple of years for that to take place. This specific committee is just in, as you stated earlier, a lot more land use, et cetera, but those people at large who want to have input on our branding and our vision and what they want scappus to be, there will be opportunities for them to do that.
Right, so there, there are going to be a series of community charrettes, um, where members of the community are able to talk about priorities. And that's something that we consider is part of this. It's just, this in and of itself is really very, it's a pretty dry process that we, we'd be going through.
These are also public meetings.
So people can
Yes.
tend, listen in. Mr. Mayor, uh, if, if that motion passes, would you be looking for just, maybe I can't think of someone and Josh can think of five, or I can think of two, it just, if you
If you
Yeah.
Think of someone.
Okay.
You know, get me their contact information, I can reach out to them and I got if they're interested.
Perfect.
Mr. Mayor, I just have a point of clarification. So are we just now voting on the committee membership? Or are we also including the agency partner organization? Cause I do have comments or questions about the agency partner organization.
Uh, we'd be
I think it's a whole thing.
Yeah.
Okay, may I, um, ask a question about the agency partner organization?
Sure.
List. Um, is there a criteria for this? Are these just kind of randoms? Cause there's, I look at this and they're significant partner agencies, but there's two that I see that are missing. That I just want to bring up to see if it's something that wants to be considered. And that is Oregon Department of Forestry and the 901 District.
When we were brainstorming about the agency partners, what we were thinking of were the agencies and organizations in the city that would have the largest changes or needs for, um, additional land or impact on the land use processes in the future. So that's why you're seeing most of those being focused around community organizations directly in the city. In terms of those other two districts, we hadn't really talked about them, uh, to this point yet.
Thank you, Isaac. As I look through the list here with that context, that makes sense. So, um, I'm, I'm just throwing those out. I'm not um, making a deal about those. Just, just be mindful, that's all. Thank you.
Thanks.
Motion.
I move that we add two members to the committee city limits of
And appoint the rest of the committee. Approve the appointments.
As well as the change of the, um, title of Pat Kessie.
Yes.
So the motion is to add two citizens at large that live within the city limits. Prove the membership of the committee and change the Chair Patrick Kessie's membership to community member at large. Do I have a second from Councilor McHughes?
I will second.
Seconded by Councilor Losowski. Any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I just have one question. Um, I'm not, at least not at the moment, not familiar with the name Deborah Jacob, who, can you remind me who that is?
Isn't she in the, Isaac, isn't she in the planning department?
Yes, yeah. So we, for Columbia County, we wanted to make sure that we got a commissioner, but also a land use planning, uh, planner.
Okay, so we can't, I would just ask for, uh, I just say Columbia County, that's good enough. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the motion, state by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next item, calendar check. Our next city council meeting will be on the 21st. Yeah, it's actually a Monday this month. Our work session will be at 6:00 PM, council meeting at 7:00 PM. We have a planning commission meeting this Thursday at 7:00 PM, 50-year stakeholder advisory committee meeting at 6:00 PM on the 15th of March. 17th of March is a parks and rec committee meeting at 6:00 PM and on the 24th of March, an economic development committee meeting at noon. Alex, you have anything?
Yes, Mayor and Council, uh, I just wanted to remind everyone, if you're interested, that there is a Zoom call that will be going over the industrial land inventory. Um, it's essentially an open house where the consultant team that helped put that together, Mackenzie Consulting, will be available to walk you through how it was put together, um, all the information available in it, if you're curious. So that's from 6:00 to 8:00 PM on, uh, March 10th of this Thursday, if you'd like to attend. I did forward the invite to you, but if for some reason you missed it, um, just let me know and I can resend if you, if you'd like to go.
Chief Davis, do you have anything other than that, uh?
No.
Got a little more negotiations with the, look, we've put out a trade offer for a couple of first round picks, uh, some cash, uh, and you know, for you stay, I think of him as, I think of it as Matthew Stafford.
New caller.
In fairness, I was instructed by someone not to say anything about it, but since we're going there, since you opened the door, thank you, thank you for that. No, I was going to say that I really do appreciate all the time and effort you've put in. Um, really great working with you and, um, you did a great job.
Yeah. And by the order of me, I'm just, uh, declaration, you cannot wait, no wait.
I just want to say thanks for having me here. It's been an honor.
I just want to say thanks for having me here. It's been an honor to serve Scappus in the interim position. I want you to know you guys have good officers and you have good staff that work here. And it's been an honor to work with the city staff and work with the mayor and the council during this just over six months. So thank you.
Thank you. Dawn, since you're here, do you have anything?
All right.
Counsel Miller.
Just one thing came to mind the other day is summer, spring and summer is approaching. I just bring it up again. I've said it before, the parallel parking on Veterans Park, just, you know, it still remains to be a huge concern of mine for safety. It's not if, it's just a matter of when a kid is going to run out in between two cars and get pegged by a car. So if there's anything that we can do whatsoever to eliminate that parallel parking along the fields there and perhaps develop some of the more parking up above to compensate for the parking loss there. I think that would be a big win and a huge public safety benefit for Veterans Park and quite frankly, our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor polling.
So I listened to the last meeting and Paul came up, you know, had his comments about our team meeting and our goal setting and, you know, one of his comments, he had mentioned, you know, how he, you know, how he was very proud of how, you know, much time and everything that we put into things. But I also wanted to say thank you to people like Paul who listen to our meetings and who are, attend our meetings, who make comments, because honestly, you guys put just as much time in and we appreciate the community members like you guys that want to speak up and they want to help keep us moving forward. So thank you very much, Paul, and thank you very much, the rest of the citizens. So other than that, that's all I have.
Man, fantastic.
President Grayson.
That was a fantastic comment. Yeah, thank you for saying that. And I was pleased to be in the company of all my fellow counselors at the Columbia County Elected Officials Meeting last week, where we revisited goals that we created prior to COVID. And it's amazing how our county leadership has continued to work on those goals and that we did a SWOT analysis and thought of some new things that we'd like to work on countywide over the next year. And and it's just great that despite that little hiccup of a pandemic that things kept moving. I'm very proud of our county for doing that. And thank you, interim Chief Davis, for being here. I've worked with you on some other smaller projects and been very impressed with your leadership and dedication. You could have kind of blown this, you know, appointment kind of off a little bit and you didn't. You took it very seriously and you acted as if you were the real deal here 24/7. So thank you for that. Our citizens are very lucky to have you. And Oregon City is very lucky to have you. I guess. Okay. This is the best part. So as I mentioned, last Friday, I got to do one of the best things I love to do and that's favorite things, and that's to teach. And the second grade classes at Grant Watts asked me to come in and do a local government class, which of course was all about us. Had pictures of all of you on there and the process it takes to make it up here and what we do and, you know, so what we come up with these goals. It's people like Dawn who, you know, implement our goals and get the action done. So we learned about all of our departments and our department heads and put names to faces and these little seven and eight year olds just couldn't believe all the amazing things we do. I followed up with the teachers and kind of gave some some ideas or prompts that they could use my sort of presentation on to use as activities. And one of the things was, hey, if you guys want to kind of brainstorm and write down some ideas for parks or ways that we could make our city better, and I promise them, and I'm going to pass this along, hi, Ms. Cordell's second grade class. I'll send you the the link to this meeting and you can watch it. But they they did just that. So I'll make sure to pass these on to Dave, our public works director, but I'm just going to read this letter because it's to all of us. It says, Dear Mrs. Grayson, thank you so much for visiting our classroom. We really enjoyed learning about our city government. Please take a look at our ideas for playground improvements. We have some pretty incredible ideas, and I will say summer water parks, theme parks, quite crazy. Thank you to the mayor and city council and all of the other city departments for making Scappus a great place to live. Sincerely, Ms. Cordell's and her student teacher, Mrs. Z, they're second graders and their whole class, and they signed this. And then each student wrote a letter and did a park design. So I'm so glad that we can do that sort of outreach and connect with our our little citizens. And we talked about how just because you're seven and eight doesn't mean you can't have a big impact on the community around you. And one of the biggest things I was pleased to hear, besides, you know, picking up trash, et cetera, was just be kind to other people and that kindness will spread. So it's great to hear that those those little, those little citizens are what's coming out of Scappus. So hey, good job, guys.
Counsel Losowski.
Sounds like those seven, seven and eight year olds could also teach us a thing or two, which I think is greatly beautiful. And I would actually ask if we could get copies of those made for everyone.
Sure.
Something I would love to read through those. So.
We have our Parks Master Plan.
I'd like to start off by saying I was also able to attend the Columbia County Leadership Forum slash meeting last week with council members from city of Scappus. Found it very informative. It's always great to be able to reach out and connect with our neighbors so we can get some cohesion on some short and long term goals and desires. Interim Chief Davis. First, thank you for your service, not just for our community, but for Oregonians. You've helped keep our community safe during the last six months. I really appreciate your leadership and dedication, and I hope you all the best moving forward. You're not too far, you know, where we are, so don't be a stranger. I also wanted to highlight that next April on the 4th, I will be out of state, so I will not be able to attend city council. I just wanted to get that out there and share that information, but ultimately, I'm very excited. Spring is right around the corner. A new season, a new start. I think that it's going to be an extremely exciting time for some more normalcy to occur within our communities, within our life. I ask that we all be mindful and respectful of one another as we try to still navigate through this time and I do see new horizons ahead. So this is a great opportunity. With that, I say thank you.
Counsel McHugh.
First of all, I just want to mention what Paul Vogel mentioned to us at our meeting the other day, this two-page spread that they have. Actually, took time to read it. I had read it until then. It's really very good. It's very complimentary towards Scappus and what we're doing there. So anyways, I wanted to go to Paul and it's very nice to add and makes us really good. I think I want to bring a business in here myself.
You're sorry.
I just want to say disagreements, okay. You know, we don't we don't carry it away from the meeting. It's just part of doing our business and if we're not honest about having differences of opinion, we're really going to be in trouble. And there's no hard feelings. It's just the way it works, you know? We all come from the same place. Every one of us have what's best for Scappus, and we're here for that reason. And we see things the same way all the time, but that's why there's seven of us.
We make one really good counselor. Yeah.
I'd just like to also thank John for all you, really, John, you've made a big difference here, probably more than what you even know. So I just want to say thank you for all your good work. Appreciate it. That's it.
Hi, Trump.
Thank you, everyone. I actually enjoy, you know, having good debates on things. And for me, it's always been discuss the issue. We're done with it. We move forward. I wish our country and people in the political world would return to that notion of just because you disagree with them on an issue doesn't mean they're a bad person. They just have a different opinion. Chief, thank you for everything you did over the last six months. It was greatly appreciated. You will be missed. And we look forward toward the future. And hearing your reports on police department make me really proud. Thank you. Just kind of to let everyone know, my father is not doing well. And so I can't tell you if I'm going to be at the next meeting or not because I don't know what's going to happen. I've canceled my vacations that I was going to go on this month because I need to be here. So I, you know, he had a business here, lived here for a good portion through late 70s, 80s, 90s, thousand. He was active. I always remember, you know, he was, had a carpet cleaning business. And when my brother was on the varsity baseball team and they needed to play a baseball game, he would go down to the field with his carpet cleaning machine and suck up all the water on the field so the game could be played versus being postponed. And did that on multiple occasions, like in the playoffs or whatnot, when there was still rain. It was just, you know, everyone contributes to their community in their own ways. And that was my dad. The ways that he contributed. So with that, thank you for everything, everyone. And let's get out of here before nine o'clock. Meeting adjourned.